Yes, there was a one in there somewhere. You got it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the maybe a fifth edition of the planning commission. And I'd like to call a meeting to order. We're conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom and members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live online through the city's website as noted on the agenda. I guess we turn off your video and we'll join Commissioner Turley Trillo as she leads us in the flag salute.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, but first a reminder for staff consultants and applicants, please turn off your video and put yourselves on mute until your item comes up. Moving on to our roll call, Commissioner Taliio.
Here.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Here. So we're back on video and sound when we come up with that particular person, right?
So the next portion of the the agenda, Mr. Vice Chair, is public comment. And so let me read this portion. The city has not received public comments for items not on the agenda. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the planning commission on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. All public hearing items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of the agenda. Any public comments that were accepted via email or by mail will be read into the record. Details associated with viewing the meeting ADA accommodations and submitting public comments were available on the agenda and on the city's social media platforms.
And do we have any public comment?
Not for items not on the agenda.
Right, that brings us to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the planning commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for September. General item number one is a recommendation for the approval of the action minutes of April 21st, 2021. We have a motion in a second.
I submit.
Second.
Move by clearly tree hole. Second by what? And do we have a? Oh, that's. Yeah, we need a vote on that.
Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yeomans. So we have a motion by Commissioner Turley Trejo, second by Watts, and motion carries four zero.
Bring this to business, but agenda item number two is a presentation on the city's work program update. The quality of life master plan. Do we have a staff report on the item?
We do. Good evening, commissioners. I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. So last Tuesday, the city council approved a contract to update the quality of life master plan. And I'm here to provide some detail on that update. But also provide some context as to where the Q L M P or quality of life master plan fits into the general plan update. A little background on the state law. A general plan is the city's blueprint for future growth and development is and is required to contain nine elements. And those elements include land use, open space, conservation, housing, environmental justice, circulation, noise, air quality and safety. And those elements are important as they also relate to the quality of life master plan. Our current status on the general plan. The last comprehensive update was in 2005, but the plan has been amended over the last 15, 16 years to read to change land uses, reflect policy changes and to meet statutory requirements. And a couple of recent examples of amendments include the alter specific plan and an affordable housing overlay or A H O Z to expedite the construction of affordable housing. And over the last few months, we've met with the general plan update subcommittee to discuss the process of the update and two key takeaways from our meetings include the first phase the update over time using grant money whenever possible. And then the second, update the quality of life master plan first as the foundation for the general plan. So the quality of life master plan, which we're all familiar with, includes six core values. And those range from healthy and livable city over to accountable and responsive city government. And the idea is to update the Q L M P through public input and later update the general plan elements and organize them under the core values as shown here. So this one sure consistency between the documents. The Q L M P serving as the foundation and the organizing document. This is an illustration of our general plan update process. And what's important to note from this graphic is that we've broken the update into four phases. And I have a slide for each phase. But I guess what's most important is we're in phase one and moving to phase two with the Q L M P update. Both phase one and phase two are 100% grant funded. And the entire process is expected to take five years. However, we're already over a year in and making progress and I would estimate we're at just over three years left. So the slide for each of the phases. The graphics here indicate that the housing and public safety elements are in progress. Staff is working with de novo consulting on both. And these two general plan elements will be going before the planning commission. And then the city council in late summer, early fall. The state requires that we take action on these two elements by October of this year, 2021. Also, this past May, the city's T I A guidelines were amended to measure vehicle miles traveled or V M T as opposed to level of service for SEQA. And this was another state requirement and was necessary to do this before diving into the full general plan update. Phase two includes four work tasks. The Q L M P is at the beginning of the process. And that process also includes a true north or community survey. And the survey results will be presented to the blue ribbon committee to help inform their discussion. So we kind of have the the temperature of the community. And we do have draft results of that survey and I expect those results are going to be presented to the city council in the new near future. We're also working with fair and peers on a baseline evaluation of our circulation network. And that process looks at what's been built or what's on the ground versus what's planned in the circuit circulation element to help us prioritize future street connections and and improve traffic flow. So our infrastructure is not complete. We know traffic's an issue and we want to take a look at what has not been built yet and try to prioritize those connections. We'll also be developing a complete streets document that'll look at all modes of transportation, including walking, biking and transit. And then G I S mapping to help us prepare for the general plan update. Phase three is a shorter phase. Expected to last just a few months and this phase is intended to help expedite phase four. What we'll do is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges analysis. We'll kind of go back and reflect, take a look at what did we learn during the Q L M P update? What did we learn during our baseline evaluation? And we'll identify any partnerships or opportunities for outreach. And then we'll establish a general plan advisory committee. And develop the R F E R F P for the consultant selection committee. So the the general plan advisory committee will be different from the blue ribbon committee working on the quality of life master plan. This is a long process. Definitely high potential for meeting fatigue. So we'll give people the opportunity that we're on the blue room and committee to extend over to the general plan advisory committee. But we'll we'll cross that bridge when we get there. And then finally, phase four is the general plan update in the E I R. So as you can see, we're building on each phase to make sure when we get the end we can be successful, efficient. And not get bogged down, you know, with with timelines and meetings and that sort of thing. So I guess all of that leads me to the quality of life master plan. This is the process graphic. This was presented last Tuesday at the city council meeting. And I'll go through this quickly, but basically along the top in red, those indicate the different blue ribbon committee meetings. I know it's difficult to see, but along the top in red are the blue ribbon committee meetings. And then at the end. Can you see my cursor on the screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so that is a review with the various city commissions. And then finally, that'll go to the city council for adoption. In the middle here indicated in green. That's our public outreach. That includes key stakeholder interviews and focus groups. We're going to launch a community engagement website. We're going to have pop up events at things like the farmer's market or perhaps T C S D events. There'll be community presentations. Though there will be plenty of public input throughout this process in addition to working through the update with the blue ribbon committee. And then along the bottom in, I guess I'll call this orange. Those are the key milestones and deliverables to the blue ribbon committee and to staff. So those are the different chapters or core value portions of the document. Till we get to the end of draft and then a community education video and then the final Q L M P. So the blue ribbon committee. That will consist of the general plan update subcommittee. So that includes Mayor Edwards and Mayor Pro Tem Ron. They made the decision to also include a represent representative from each of the boards and commissions. So from the planning commission, we have Linnae Turley Trejo, Ross Jackson from the Old Town Local Review Board, David Maddox from Public Traffic Safety, Kathy Sizemore from Community Services and Denise Williams from the ready commission. And then finally, we extended invites to again, a diverse group of stakeholders representing a variety of interests. So we worked with the subcommittee to kind of come up with this list. All of these people have been contacted. A couple, one had a decline and then another appointed a designee. But essentially, these people represent the blue ribbon committee. And you can see it's pretty diverse. I expect that our first meeting will be in at the end of June or maybe mid July, depending on how things go. So with that, I'll open it up to some questions, comments, suggestions. I'd love to get your feedback before we could begin this process.
Thank you, Matt. You individually, starting with Commissioner Watts. For if you have any comments or questions.
Yeah, Matt, on that on that last point you made, will those meetings be open to the general public?
They will be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Yeomans.
I'm sorry, Gary, could you repeat that? Thanks.
And Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
And yes, Matt, can you go back to the slide with when it goes to the city council? Like I was just thinking at that timeline. The one that's hard to read. Yes, that one.
My apologies.
No, it's just. So those are all the meetings. And so what is the timeline looking at to try to send that to the city council?
So this this graphic. We negotiated the contract. We were working with the consultant and had identified this beginning in the winter of 2021. So we're a little bit behind. Obviously, it's May. But COVID had a lot to do with that. I would expect that this is a year long process. That's what's anticipated. So I would say you know, beginning in June or July, I would think we'd be back to the city council in June, June or July of 22.
Okay, and so the blue ribbon committee would, that would be their assignment during that time. And then, as you said, they would be able to stay on and advisory if they so so wanted.
That's correct.
After that.
The the blue ribbon committee's obligation is for six to eight committee meetings.
Right.
Over over a year. And then in terms of the blue ribbon committee moving on to a general plan advisory committee, right now, that's the idea.
Right.
Is that they would have the option to do that, but there's still a lot to.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Matt, it's Gary again. Can you briefly illustrate the how the commission, the planning commission will interact with this general plan advisory committee? Will there be crossover? How will that play out?
That's a very good question and as we work through this, both from a staff perspective and the consultant, the idea is you know, given that I'm managing this update and Linnae is representing the planning commission at strategic times throughout the process, we'll be coming back sharing information and asking for your input. And the plan is that each commissioner board will have a staff represent staff representative and also commissioner or board member who will do the same. So though there's going to be plenty of information going back and forth between the blue ribbon committee and the different commissions and boards.
My question was the advisory committee, not the blue ribbon commit. The general plan, general plan advisory committee, you reference.
The so when we start working on the general plan update with the general plan advisory committee, I imagine it'll be the same. It'll be very similar to to the process I just described for the blue ribbon committee.
Just a point, you may want to, and I know you put not your idea, but if you want to pass it on.
Yeah.
Um, in in the interest of spreading the well, so to speak, or making sure that we have a wide variety of representation, you may want to consider different people rather than just roll over one committee to the next, just tonight, just a suggestion.
That's a good suggestion. And that's why we're doing this. We're taking this to each of the boards and commissions and we're looking for this kind of feedback as we go through the process. So we'll we'll take that into consideration.
Yeah, I have none other than to come in again, that's putting this plan together. A lot of work to do it and a lot of work to carry it out. So I want to give kudos to Matt and the folks that are involved in that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, this is the receiving file item, so there will be no roll call vote and we will move on to the next business item, which is that agenda item number three. The general plan consistently review of an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 25 capital improvement program. Let's add him. Mary Phillips, Senior Center Emergency Generator. Which I don't know what they're operating on now, but that's a good one. And we have a staff report on the aisle.
Yes, we do. I'm just going to share my screen here. Can you guys see that? Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. Today I am presenting to you an amendment to the currently adopted capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021, 2025 for general plan consistency review. So as we all know, state planning and zoning law section 65103 requires that the planning commission review and provide comments to the city council regarding conformity of the capital improvement program with the adopted general plan. And the planning commission's role is to review the capital improvement program and determine if the projects are consistent with the adopted general plan. So back in June, on June 3rd, 2020, the planning commission did review the a draft of the C I P budget for fiscal year 2021, 2025 and adopted a resolution making the findings of consistency with the general plan, which then on June 9th of 2020, the city council approved the C I P budget for that year or for those years. And so in addition to the approved C I P, staffs recommend the addition of one new C I P project. So this project is grant funded and needs to be included in this fiscal in the fiscal year of 2021, 25. Just because of timing, we don't want to kind of lose that. I think it's about two months. So prior to obviously prior to city council appropriating funding to the project, the planning commission must first make the findings that the project is consistent with our general plan. So the C I P amendment is under the general category of infrastructure projects. It's for the Mary Phillips Senior Center. It's an emergency generator. And you can see here it's in on the image where the proposed emergency generator will be. It's basically in the back of the senior center. And I have a little bit of better aerial. So you can see here on the right hand side of the image where Mercedes Street and then on top you see the sixth street. This is the our fire station. And so the senior center and you can see that it's going to be pretty hidden in the back of the senior center. So so just a couple of keynotes. So the project description is basically to design and install an energy efficient emergency generator at the senior center and the benefit is to enhance public safety in the event of a local emergency. And currently, the project status is that this is a new project for the fiscal year 2020, 21. And the project is estimated to be completed in fiscal year 2021, 22. So with staff's analysis, the the C I P sheet is consistent with our quality of life master plan under core core value number three, under the a safe and prepared community. And for the general plan, a public safety element undergo for an efficient responsive emergency service following a disaster. Under policy 4.1, it provides for and maintain a coordinated emergency services response to reduce community risk and property damage in the event of a disaster. And of course, it also follows policy 4.5, which regulates the location of critical facilities to ensure they continue to function after a disaster. So the secret determination, this project is is not a quote unquote project as defined by SEQA guidelines, section 15061 B 3 and 15378 B 4. And staff's recommendation today is that the planning commission review the proposed amendment to the current fiscal years 2021, 2025 capital improvement program and make a determination that the proposed amendment is in conformance with the adopted city of Temecula general plan. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Questions of staff, starting with Gary Watts.
Sarah, nice presentation. This probably question is remotely related at best, but has the senior center, the Mary Phillips Senior Center been closed this entire time from last March or May or whenever it was? Is it even open to to any services or has it just been closed this entire time?
You know, that's a really good question. Just from what I've seen on social media, a lot of things are starting to open back up, but to be honest with you, I'm not 100%. This C I P sheet is just for it's a backup generator, just in case for emergencies. So.
I know.
Yeah.
I said it was remotely related. I understand. Thank you.
No problem. I can I can find out and get back to you for sure.
I'm assuming it has been closed. I can't imagine this.
Yeah, I don't think it's been open. I feel like with a lot of services, they're slowly kind of rolling it out as summer maybe starts to begin. I see a lot of posting on social media of remote activities and you know, anything kind of virtual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Community services district or department is at the head of that. And I know there's been some services that have continued meals and such. And I think that they've had like outdoor pickups for food available and some other things. But I believe that all the programs that were indoors have not been continuing on, but as Sarah said, we can get more detail and let you know.
No, I I would assume that's the case. And that's certainly, I just kind of wanted to verify that. But no, you don't need to do any further on that. That's fine. Thank you.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Yeah, question. In the first part of your presentation, you said it's grant funded. And then you said later on, something about that the city asked to approve the the expenditure. I mean, is there is this coming out of the general fund? Or is your money that's funding it from a grant?
Yeah, Gary, good question. Maybe Amir, he's on the call and maybe he can answer a little bit to that better because he's managing that project. I do know that is, we do have a grant in. Amir, I'll turn it over to you. I think you can answer that's better. We can't hear you. You're on mute.
Is that it? Gary? Okay, well then.
I think what, sorry, just to go back, just to mention. So I think Amir is having some technical difficulty with his. So Gary, just to confirm, so it is grant funded. We we do have the money secured. It will not be part of it would not come out of our general fund.
All right, well, that's the question. That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get a mayor if he comes back before we end tonight. Commissioner Terry Trejo.
And no questions.
And I have none. There any further discussion before we call for a motion? Anybody?
Do we? Is this a receiving file or are we voting?
No, it's a boat.
I'll make a motion for approval as presented.
Doc Kent.
Commissioner Yeomans has made the motion. Commissioner Watts made his second. All in favor? We need a roll call on that.
Yeah, I'll actually go ahead and do the roll call vote. So Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Hi.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Yeomans, a second from Commissioner Watts and motion carries four zero.
And that brings us to the public hearing.
So I will read this again that we will now move to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Any person may submit written comments to the planning commission before or during a public hearing in support or in opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed in the important notice at the top of the agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the planning commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after the planning commission's decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
And that is the agenda item number four, a planning application number P A 21 dash 0105. A development plan application to construct the 33,636 square foot industrial building on the south side of it needed Alvarado approximately 1,000 feet west of Tierra Alta Way. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Can everybody see this? Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So planning application P A 21 0105 is a development plan for the construction of a approximately 33,600 square foot industrial building. It's a two approximately two acre site generally located on the south side of Avenue Alvarado, about 1,000 feet west of Tierra Alta Way. I will be presenting specifically on building number four here. Later on this evening, we have other colleagues that will be presenting two additional buildings. So specifically relating to building four here. So specifically relating to building four here, this project is located in the light industrial zoning district. This project meets the minimum parking requirements per the City of Temecula Development Code. And this is also consistent with the citywide design guidelines for specifically industrial buildings. And this project will also feature an outdoor employee break area. And that includes seats, umbrellas and trash receptacles. Here, we have the site plan, the top left portion features the enhanced paving and the entrance to the site. A little bit below that, you will find the employee break area I was just referring to. And then, of course, we have the industrial building with about thirty one thousand, six hundred square feet of warehousing and about two thousand square feet of office space. This site is required to have twenty percent landscaping, but the project has twenty eight percent. And here we have the elevations and renderings of the proposed building. This is a four sided architecture with alternating roof lines and facades to create more articulation. It also incorporates painted concrete, anodized aluminum, metal canopies. Prominent entrance to the building using vibrant paint color and articulated window glazing. And this project is, has a CEQA categorical exemption per section one, five, three, three, two, class thirty two, infill development projects. With that, staff recommends planning commission approve P eight, twenty one, zero, one, zero, five, subject to the conditions of approval. The applicant and his team is here as his staff to answer any questions you may have. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jamie. Commissioner Watts, comments or what?
Just a quick comment. Looks great. I really, really like the colors, if those are accurate and the design. Very nice.
And Commissioner Yeomans?
No, no questions, just kind of the same comments that Mr. Watt made.
And Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
No questions.
And I have none beyond what's been said and I agree with that. Very nice looking building. And we will, at that point, open the public hearing.
All right, as a reminder, any public comments that were received by email and prior, in mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. The email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
And the applicant here and wish you address the commission?
Yeah, Larry Markham. We concur with the conditions of approval and available. Answer any questions.
Questions of the applicant, anyone? Watts, Yeomans. Commissioner Charlie Trejo, and I have none. Hello, Larry, good to see you again.
Very good.
Do we have any public comment?
The city has received no public comments for this item.
And I don't see there's any reason for a rebuttal. Anyone out there want to rebut anything? Anyway, I guess we're down to.
We can close the public hearing at this point and take it to deliberation.
Okay, we didn't, I thought we got that into discussion, but then any further discussion individually? Mister Watts.
No.
Yeomans. Charlie Trejo.
Um, no, just I like the color on the building also, that blue looks nice. And I drove out there today and that should look nice out there.
Any further discussion, again, with the same order of speaking?
No.
As that will take a motion in a second, if we can get it.
If we can just close the public hearings, so we need to close the public hearing first, then we can.
And that I will do, dang.
And I'll make the motion for approval. Good to see activity on the west side again.
I'll second it.
I'll do the roll call vote. Commissioner Tolicio.
Aye.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Watts.
Aye.
And Commissioner Yeomans. And motion carries four oh with a motion by Commissioner Yeomans and second by Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Thanks, thanks staff, thanks, Hi-Mei, and thanks commissioners.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would say thank you to Larry like everybody else.
Larry's a popular guy around here.
He is.
Okay, the next two items on the agenda are separate but related industrial buildings that will be presented in one presentation by staff. The two items are as follows. And that's the agenda item. Item number five is planning application number P eight, two, zero, dash, zero, one, three, two. Development plan applicant to construct an approximate seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty nine square foot industrial building. And P eight, two, one, dash, zero, five, two, four, a minor exception to allow for reduction in landscaping requirements. The project is generally located fifteen hundred feet west of the Avenue de Alvarado and Tierra Alta Way into intersection. Item number six is planning application number P eight, two, zero. I'm getting ahead of myself.
I actually split the two presentations, so we can just deal with the agenda item number five if you'd like.
Okay.
We can do that.
Yeah, there's, there are three of them here. A staff report.
Okay. As Hi-Mei mentioned in his presentation, there are two more buildings going before the commission tonight. The first here with the agenda number five is P eight, twenty one, dash, zero, one, three, two, and its corresponding application for a minor exception. The project is for a development plan to allow for the construction of an approximately seventeen thousand square foot industrial building. As well as with the minor exception for landscaping, which we'll talk about that in just a moment. The project is located here in the red boxed area. Right now, the area is vacant, as you can see, with some existing industrial buildings there behind it. What they're proposing is a one story industrial structure. I already mentioned where its surroundings were. Access will be from Avenue de Alvarado. Once it's completed, they'll have enhanced paving as you enter into the project site. Just in just a little bit, there are thirty one parking spaces that are provided per the development code. They're only required of twenty three, so they're overparked for this one. You also have a screen loading area, which meets the design guideline requirements. And there's also an outdoor employee break area. Take a look here at the site plan. You can see that vehicular entrance right there towards the bottom along the streets. And then we have a little arrow there pointing to the main entrance of the building. And then as you keep going further into the project site, you'll see the loading area and that loading area is screened by the building itself. So they've met that requirement there. Architecturally, the project does meet all of the development code and design guideline requirements, four sided architecture. The prominent entrance with contrasting colors and glazing, varied wall planes and varied materials and colors. Take a look at those elevations now. This is the south elevation. This is what you'd see basically kind of along the street. As we keep going into the project is what you see from the parking lot. You can see the entrance there to the left and then all the way, excuse me, to the left, to the right. And then all the way to the left, you have the loading areas. We have the rear basically on the east. Now we have the northern elevation. For the minor exception, the applicant has requested a slight decrease in landscape coverage. The reason for that decrease was to allow a little more space so that way fire turnaround requirements could be met. The minor exception would allow up to a fifteen percent reduction. And as you can see here, the code requires twenty percent of landscape coverage for the project and they're right at eighteen point seven five, so they're just barely under. They easily meet the requirement for a minor exception. Take a look at what that landscape coverage looks like even with the reduced landscaping. As you can see here, the project is well landscaped even with a very slight reduction. Really can't even tell that it's a, it's a little lower. Proceed, staff has determined the project is exempt per section one, five, three, three, two, class thirty two, infill development. Based on the information presented, staff recommends the commission review and approve the project based on acquired findings and recommended conditions of approval. This concludes our presentation. I'm available for any questions and we have the applicant still on if you'd like to speak with them. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm still, you're curious about number six. Are we including that? Are we doing that separately?
That'll be the next item on the agenda.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay, with that, I will ask colleagues for an individually if they have questions of staff and that's another another role for Watts and Yeomans. And Charlie Trejo in that order.
Nothing for me.
Yeomans?
Nothing for me now.
No questions.
You're on. Did you say no questions or?
No question, no question.
No questions. Okay, I have no questions then. And now we'll open the public hearing.
Uh, Larry Markham, on behalf of the applicant, we concur with the conditions of approval and available to answer any questions the commission may have.
Before we move on, as a reminder, any public comments that were received by email or mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. The email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
Any public comment?
We, we have received no public comments for this item.
And a rebuttal from the applicant?
No, thanks.
You sure? Okay, Larry. And no further comments from the public. We'll close the public hearing and bring it to back to the commission for discussion and motion in the, in the same order. So we start with Commissioner Watts?
Uh, no, no, nothing, no comments.
And Commissioner Yeoman? Nothing?
I said no comments, though.
Okay, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Charlie Trejo?
Uh, no comments.
I have no comments and we'll call for a motion.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
We'll do the roll call vote again. Commissioner Tolicio.
Aye.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Watts.
Aye.
And Commissioner Yeomans. So I have a motion from Commissioner Charlie Trejo, second from Commissioner Watts and motion carries four oh.
Again, thanks staff and thanks commissioners.
And item number seven, are we there yet? Planning Commission application P eight, twenty one, dash, zero, 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 seven, a conditional use permit allowing an existing restaurant to upgrade their current alcohol control.
We're actually on number six still. Um, so Eric is gonna do item six first. No, it didn't get included. It was, it was going to be, but it wasn't. So we need to separately take item.
Okay, let's go backwards and look at number six. That's an agenda item, planning application P eight, two, zero, dash, zero, one, two, five, a development plan application to construct approximately nineteen thousand, nine hundred and nineteen square foot industrial building located approximately a thousand feet west of the Avenue de Alvarado and Tierra Alta Way intersection. Staff report please.
Thank you. P eight, twenty one, zero, one, two, five is literally right next door to the project we just discussed. This is the construction of an additional industrial building totaling a little under twenty thousand square feet. Part is located here in the red boxed area you see before you. Again, it's just a one story industrial structure surrounded by existing uses and vacant lots. Access will also be from Avenue de Alvarado. There are thirty two parking spaces provided, twenty five required per the code. So again, we're overparked on this one. We also again have the screened loading area and the outdoor employee break area. Take a look at the site plan. We have the entrance here. This is that shared access with the other product we just discussed. Point out the main entrance for pedestrians to get into the building and then also the shielded and screened loading area that you see there on the screen. Architecturally, again, it meets all the development code and design guideline requirements. Got four sided architecture. Prominent entrance with contrasting colors and glazing, varied wall planes and varied materials and colors. Take a look at the elevations, the south elevation, this would be along the street. The east elevation. West. And the north. Again, landscaping kind of mirrors what we saw previously. And then from a secret perspective, staff recommends that the project is exempt per section one, five, three, three, two, class thirty two, as it is an infill development project. Based on the information just presented, staff recommends approval of the project per the required findings, recommended conditions of approval. This concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available. The applicant is also online too.
Thank you, Eric. Question to staff, Mr. Watts?
No questions.
Yeomans?
No questions.
Charlie Trejo.
No questions.
I have none. I'll open the public hearing.
Once again, Larry Markham, on behalf of the applicant, we concur with the conditions of approval and are available for any questions.
So once again, I have to read that as a reminder, any public comments that were received by email or mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. Email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
Yeah, that should bring us to seven now.
And just to be clear for this item, we have received no comments.
And I guess we should check to see if the applicant wants to address the commission.
He, he said he didn't.
Nothing.
I apologize, I missed that. So then, if there aren't any public comments, we can now close and go to deliberations on agenda item six.
So, and we have a motion in a second?
No, we have to close the public hearing first and then we're gonna have deliberations on it and any motion. I don't recall here in a motion. I apologize if I missed it, but let's close the public hearing.
Yeah, I just was confused with where six fitted into it. It looked like it was same, the same presentation. And when, and can be handled together, but if not, we will call for a motion on that, on item six.
So let's close the public hearing first.
All right, it's closed.
Excellent. Now let's go to deliberations and see if anyone has comments, and if not, we can.
Any comments, Commissioner Watts?
No, thank you.
Yeomans? Charlie Trejo.
The only comment I have is I really love the colors from the first building, better than the next two. But looks nice. That's all I got.
And I have none beyond what's been said.
And I so move.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
And again, I'll do the roll call vote again. So Commissioner Tolicio.
Aye.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Watts.
Aye.
And Commissioner Yeomans. So I have a motion from Commissioner Charlie Trejo, a second from Commissioner Watts and motion carries four zero.
Now we stumble in on number seven. Planning application number P eight, twenty one, dash, zero, 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 seven, a conditional use permit to allow an existing restaurant to upgrade their current alcoholic beverage control type forty one license to a type forty seven license at two, eight, four, nine, five, Old Town Front Street. Staff report please.
P eight, twenty one, dash, zero, 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 seven, has a conditional use permit to allow an existing restaurant to upgrade the existing alcoholic beverage control type forty one license. the existing alcoholic beverage control type forty-one license to a type forty-seven license. The project is located here on the corner of Old Town Front and Fifth Street in the red box area you see before you. Basically what the applicant is doing is they like to apply for a type forty-seven license and upgrade from their type forty-one. Type forty-seven will allow beer, wine and distilled spirits. There is no live entertainment proposed as part of this application. The hours for the business will remain Monday through Sunday, eight AM to ten PM. Take a look at the site plan. I hear you have orientry of Old Town Front Street and then the existing L-shaped building. And it is the Mad Madeline's Restaurant right there on the corner in the red shaded area that you see. Take a look at the side, give me the floor plan. We have here their existing covered patio, their interior space. They put a little arrow right there to show the main entrance on, on where to enter the site. Proceed staff has determined the project is exempt per section one, five, three, oh, one, class one, as it is an existing facility. And based on the information presented, staff recommends that the project is approved, so it's a proposed resolution and recommended conditions of approval. This concludes our presentation. If you have any further questions, I'm here to answer them and the applicant is on the Zoom as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? Commissioner Watts?
No questions.
Yeoman?
Just curiosity, how long has Bad Madeline's been in that location?
As far as I can remember ever.
Yeah, I would defer to the applicant, but it's been as long as I can remember too.
Well, it's way too big to cover.
Okay.
And Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Um, Eric, how many type forty-seven licenses are there in Old Town now?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Okay, and, um, I know I asked you earlier as far as calls for police out there to Mad Madeline's. Do you want to? Just share that?
Sure. Uh, we, as part of our review process for these alcohol licenses, we obviously engage the police department to make sure that the business isn't a problem or anything like that. And the police department has indicated that there are some calls for service kind of in the general area as well as at that address, but they do share that address with the restaurant behind them. And with the way that PD keeps their records, it's not really easy to determine if the call originated at Mad Madeline's. However, PD did say that Mad Madeline is not a problem business for them whatsoever. They don't have issue with them.
Okay, thank you.
That will open the public hearing.
All right, I have my part to read again. As a reminder, any public comments that we, that were received by email and mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. The email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
Thank you. And does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Yes, hi. Hi, good evening. Uh, I'm Steve Rawlings. I'm here on behalf of Mad Madeline's and, uh, with me tonight in, in my office is Sid Hamilton. Since nineteen ninety-one, it's been about thirty years. As far as I recall, it's a other case because I graduated high school in nineteen eighty-four and I remember going down there in the early eighties um, and ordering a burger there. So that, that location has had a burger restaurant, I believe, since the early eighties. And Sid Hamilton's family purchased the business in nineteen ninety-one and they have operated it since. Uh, they have always operated with a beer and wine license. Um, I think that, um, I'm very glad to hear that it hasn't been a police problem. I think that Mad Madeline's is a, is very much a known quantity here. It's exceptionally well managed. We haven't had any particular issues there. Um, I did want to address just a couple of things, um, there. We don't have any, um, we understand that there was some concerns raised, um, by some other folks in regards to health department codes and, uh, some building code issues. And I did want to take a couple minutes to address that because I've been sitting here talking to Sid a little bit about those. So, um, just a, just a couple of things, um, that, that we wanted to kind of point out. First of all is that he does serve his beer in plastic mugs, clear plastic mugs. Or they serve as a bottle. They serve wine in a clear plastic or a glass, wine glass. Um, all other sodas are, are done in paper cups. We don't have any styrofoam cups, uh, on the, on the premises. They're in paper cups. It's, they usually say right on them Coca-Cola. And, uh, we discussed with Mr. Jones earlier, we, we don't have any issues with serving our distilled spirits in clear plastic cups so that they're, you know, e- easily distinguished from our, uh, you know, from other beverages there. Um, there were some other, you know, issues about, you know, health department, um, regulations and code. I talked to, um, you, but he actually had a health department, um, inspection two days ago and he was recertified as a grade A. Um, we're not aware of any violations on, on building codes at all. There was a, a, you know, point that was brought up about restaurants. We said it has a restaurant, restroom there. It does have a code lock on it. And that is simply because obviously over the years, there's a lot of foot traffic in, um, Temecula and it is intended for patrons only. There is a code, all of their servers know the code. Anybody that needs to use the restroom, they, they give them the code and they're able to use the restroom at, at all hours. Nobody's prevented from using it. But it is intended for patrons only. And there's a lot of restaurants that I, I have been in, um, over the years that have a similar type of situation there. Um, also in terms of, you know, health department, um, things, we do have a three compartment sink. So we're able to obviously wash our, wash our dishes. Um, and that is compliant with, with health department regulations. We have floor drains. And, you know, we have a certificate of occupancy there. Again, it's known quantity. We're right out on the street there. Everybody can see operations at all time, at all time. The request this evening is that, you know, Sid would like the opportunity to, um, serve the distilled spirits. A, a lot of that is to, to meet, um, you know, customer demand. I think that, you know, clearly he is a proven operator that, you know, has a very, very good track record and is almost a, a kind of almost a historic monument there in, in Old Town, um, because he's been there for so long. Um, we concur with the conditions of approval, though we would like to ask, um, you know, for your consideration possibly on Friday and Saturday evenings, we might be able to serve until midnight, um, not, not beyond that. That is something we, you know, Sid and I just discussed, Eric, I was, um, for your consideration. The hours otherwise would remain as a So, you know, with that, I'm available to answer any, any questions and like I said, Sid is, uh, there, there is, you can't go underneath the screen and listen to Sid Hamilton. So thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Any questions of the applicant? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Have we received any comments or questions from the, from the, uh, on this item from the public?
Yes, we have received one public comment and I'll go ahead and read that now. So this, uh, was addressed to myself and Luke and Eric Jones. It's Texas Lil's Mesquite Grill is an immediate neighbor of Mad Madeline's Grill. Sharing the same building, access and parking lot. Texas Lil's has no objection to Mad Madeline's obtaining a type forty-seven, but respectfully objects to the inaccuracy of the application and the inadequacy of the proposed conditions of approval. Facts. Mad Madeline's currently has at least fifty seats with one restroom serving its patrons. The restroom is frequently locked, not available to patrons and or out of order. And Mad Madeline's patrons are advised to use Texas Lil's restroom. Mad Madeline's has an unapproved shack slash lean-to on the south side of its structure, which is being used for food storage, for which it has no building or health department approval. The interior restaurant space is approximately five hundred and fifty square feet. The plans as attached are inaccurate, both in size, scale and layout. For example, the restaurant does not have indoor dining. The area shown for indoor dining contains refrigeration units and soda machine. The interior is not presently designed to serve alcohol, does not have a jockey box, floor drains or capacity to wash glassware, although staff analysis claims there will be no construction by necessity. There will be construction to accommodate the service of alcohol. Requests for added conditions of approval. Texas Lil's respectfully requests that the commission imposes additional conditions of approval as follows. One, applicant submit for approval by the health department and the building department professionally prepared plans, structural plumbing and electrical, showing the storage location for liquor and necessary equipment for serving liquor, storing glassware and washing glassware. Two, the applicant meets current standards for restrooms based on the number of actual seats in the restaurant patio. Three, that approval is conditioned on the upperable restroom being made available to the patrons at all times when the applicant is open. And four, if alcohol will be served in paper or styrofoam cups such as the applicant currently uses for beer and wine, that the applicant have an ABC approved plan, which will prevent patrons from walking out with open containers. Respectfully submitted Texas Lil's Mesquite Grill, uh, signed by Becky Walton, general manager. And that is the only comment, uh, that I have received for this item.
With that, any comments from staff or to staff and the applicant on this item? Rebuttal for the applicant.
Yes, um, uh, that, those were some of the points that I was trying to address earlier there. We do have three compartments saying we don't serve in styrofoam cups. As far as we know, we, we're completely compliant with all health.
I'm, I'm sorry, can we, um, have you speak a little bit closer to the mic because it's a little bit hard to hear you?
Hey, I'm, I'm very sorry. Um, um, as I had mentioned earlier, um, in our earlier presentation, um, you know, we, we, we don't serve cups in styrofoam. Um, we have adequate dishwashing capabilities. We have floor drains and as far as we're, um, as far as we understand, we're, we're certainly compliant with all health department regulations and um, and the city of Temecula building code there. Um, I will say this, those are the Madeline's, uh, the plan was to label it as indoor dining and that's actually a food prep area. All of the seating is what you can kind of see on that outfit in the enclosed patio area there. So, um, that, that is, that's a fact that I assume that most of everybody hopefully has been able to dine at Mad Madeline's, um, there. Um, but, um, I think that, you know, again, we don't believe that we're going to have to do any of this from construction or health department code, um, as, as part of this, uh, service.
It's really hard to hear you and understand you.
Very sorry. Is this better? No.
Um, no.
Hold on.
Steve, you're fading in and out as part of the problem.
Sometimes, sometimes Steve, if you turn off your video, it frees up some of the bandwidth, which might maybe help your audio. Maybe give that a try.
Okay, can everybody hear me better now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I had to put my headphones in. My, my apologies, um, with that. As I had mentioned earlier in our presentation, we, we believe that we're completely compliant with all health department regulations. We have three compartment sinks. We have floor drains. Um, our bathroom for thirty-one years has been more than adequate, um, for the patrons. We have a code lock on there that it says for patrons only and we freely give out the code to that, to that bathroom. We're not aware anybody's ever been denied a use of our bathroom. I, I did mention that, um, on, on the floor plan, uh, it, it was indicated as indoor dining. That is, that is a mis, uh, mislabel on that. That's an area which, um, the servers, um, uh, take out food there. Originally it was indoor dining, but all of the dining is now right there on that enclosed patio as, as people can see there. And, and again, as far as we're, uh, we know, we, we meet all occupancy code requirements and the health department requirements in our current service. And we don't believe that we're going to have to do any, any additional construction, um, to accommodate this service.
Did you, did you have any comment to their concerns about the lean-to shack that, that has food in it?
Again, as, as, um, I mentioned earlier, the health department was just out there, uh, you know, two days ago, recertified our A rating. Um, and, and we're, we're not aware that, uh, anything, you know, we're in violation of any building code. I believe that that lean-to has been there for, uh, years. Um, and so.
It's not a lean-to shack either. That shack is a food storage area. Um, here, let me put this on. That, he mentions about lean-to shack or whatever you want to call it. Uh, no, it, it has been a food storage area for thirty, thirty years. The health department does check it every time they come out and they do tell me if it's wrong or right or what. All our food, all our cans and all our food is six inches up, off the ground and on shelf. And also it could, um, our CO two tank is stored there inside that, that storage area. Part in the back there also. So health department is fully aware and they do check that every time they do come out and, uh, do, do their thing. They're at a restaurant. Other than that, uh, the floor veins has always been what the health department has always wanted, the big square ones that go down in the floors. And they're in the right locations for the health department. Our seating, uh, is incorrect from Ron Walton. It, uh, our outside patio, our original outside patio is holds about seventy to eighty people. Like Steve said, our restrooms have always been open. We never refer our customers to Texas Hills. It's two separate, uh, businesses. Our restrooms are in the back with signs pointing to where the location of our restroom is. But recently we had to put the code because yes, Old Town is growing and more people are reading that sign. So we have people from the outside coming in. So other than that, that restaurant is always open. It does have a code. One, five, nine, three, if you guys want to use it. Um, anyways, other than that, um, let's see what else we got.
Is there, excuse me, is there one restroom or two?
Uh, this one, uh, there's one restroom and for the seating, we do have, uh, you know, also it's ADA complaint. And that's been checked out, um, and measured and so other than that, um, we'll see what else. There you go. Now the sink wise, three departments sink. We've always washed, uh, glasses, our beer mugs, our dishes in our three department sink like the health department wants us to do. And it's always been at the temperature it should be and the type of soap that should be in those three department sinks. So they do, you know, uh, look at that department and also, you know, take the temperature of the water and what kind of soap we are using. But we've been doing that for thirty years. For thirty years also, the wine glasses have been used. Also the hard, uh, beer mug, sixteen ounces with a beer handle has always been used for our beer. We always have had a keg fridge reader with six taps on the, on the top for beer or keg beer and bottles. Beer is in our refrigerator at the temperature at thirty degrees, between thirty, thirty-five. If the customer wants a glass, uh, the beer mug glass, um, it's the hard plastic type. We would get that to them, but our tap beer does go in the, uh, hard plastic, uh, beer mug, sixteen ounce with a beer handle. Uh, so we've always served that for thirty years also, um, when we were doing our beer and wine. So we've never really had a foam cup. Like Ron said, uh, it's always been Coca-Cola that we've been with. And it's in a Coca-Cola cup for our sodas, waters, iced teas, et cetera, et cetera. So other than that, um, I don't know what more I could say. So, um, there you go. Hi, how you doing? And, uh, like you said, we've been there, yeah, since nineteen ninety-one, um, for thirty years. So.
So are there any other further questions of the applicant from staff? So are there any other further questions of the applicant from staff or commissioners before we move on?
No, not for me.
Okay, in an interim, Stuart, have we received any public comments?
I have received no additional public comments.
And hearing that, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion, starting with the commissioner Watts.
Yeah, um, I'll try to be nice here. That, that presentation was not great. Um, didn't hear almost anything. It sounded like it was underwater, so I'm not sure about what was said and what wasn't. Uh, but I do have a question for Eric. Um, and I don't know if you have the answer or not, but you know, the health department does their thing and I know we're not, we're not making decisions as it relates to any health violations or things of that nature. We're, we're sticking strictly to the conditional use permit process. But my concern is what was brought up in that public comment was that there are potential things that would not be in compliance, I guess, with the development code or with, uh, their approval to operate. Do you have information on that? In other words, like the lean to, I'm, I'm not sure, but is that something? I think if I remember correctly, the public comment alluded to the fact that it's not a legitimate building or something like that. Um, excuse me, I'm probably way off on that, but, but my concern is, do they meet all the standards already? Um, that should be, uh, you know, applied as per their, uh, their develop, their operation.
They, they meet the standards for having a conditional use permit, but as part of a conditionally's permit review, we did not go back and check building permits, uh, because they've not proposed any new construction for this project. So that was not part of the review.
Okay, and as far as the restrooms go, and I may be wrong on this, but was there a capacity of fifty in the restaurant and one restroom for fifty people? Is that right? And workers too, I guess?
Well, yeah, we didn't check restroom capacity as part of a C U P for just this upgrade of alcohol licensing. Um, it's because they've not proposed any, any new construction for this.
And Gary, there are, um, thresholds that, uh, have to be met before we can require, uh, rest, or restroom upgrades. And those, uh, thresholds are based on the cost of, uh, new improvements that are installed, if tenant improvements are being done. But with none being done, we're dealing with an existing restaurant that currently serves food, currently serves sodas, iced tea, beer, wine, and now we're adding another liquid, the distilled spirits. So none of the operations are changing. Um, you know, clearly they'll need some additional storage space. Um, and, and perhaps some different, uh, clear plastic, uh, glasses. But by and large, um, the operations here are not changing. And because they're not spending money on those improvements, um, they would not even begin to cross a threshold that we would be able to require the restroom upgrades.
Okay, that's what my question was, was what, you know, our area of interest here is the conditional use permit and all the allegations or the comments that were made regarding the health department is a health department's concern, just like inspecting elevators is a fire department concern. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, um, treading on any areas that were either beyond our authority or our jurisdiction. Um, because some of those, what I heard, and I, once again, I apologize because that presentation was not great. Um, I don't, at the very end it was good, but, uh, couldn't hear anything really. And that's not a, Steve, that's not a reflection on you. I know it's a technological thing and it's a Zoom thing, but I want to make my voice clear on that. That is the downfall of Zoom when you get a presentation like that. So, um, I think those are my questions, Eric. Uh, and, um, and Stuart, thank you for clearing that up. That was helpful. That was what I was after, so thank you.
I'd like to add a little bit to that. Where we do see deficiencies, whether we're dealing with, um, a modification application, say to do an addition to a building or a conditional use permit, whatever the application is, if we see deficiencies, typically it's in landscaping or something like that. Um, we will work with the applicant to correct those deficiencies before moving them on, uh, and even bringing them to hearing if they need to come before you. In this case, we, we are not aware of any deficiencies. Um, and, you know, Mr. Walton brought up, I think, a great point about the restrooms. Uh, but it's just a matter of legally what the, the rules are and the requirements uh, that would force that, um, expenditure from the applicant. Uh, in, in this case, existing restaurant with all the beer and wine, everything they're already doing, this addition doesn't trigger that, so.
Thank you.
It is a good point, though, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Walton reaching out to us on that.
Can I ask for the record, um, Mr., I know we already closed the public hearing, but since there have been concerns about, um, the commission not being able to fully understand Mr. Rawlings' presentation. I know you, from what I understood, it seemed like you covered all the points again when you went on, um, you know, on your headset. Are there any additional points that you feel that you need to raise again in the interest of making sure that you have a full and fair hearing? And that, um, anything you wanted to present is heard by the commission, is, are there any additional points that you would like to make?
Certainly, and thank you for that opportunity and my, and my sincerest apologies. I, I, um, I don't, I don't, I don't know what happened. Usually it works okay, so my, my sincerest apologies. Um, no, we covered, um, you know, our, our points with regards to, um, you know, some of the concerns with the health department and the, um, uh, building department, um, with that, uh, with our rebuttal there. So I don't think that we have anything to add, add to that. I don't know if the commission asked. We wanted to possibly have some consideration about possibly Friday and Saturday evening staying, uh, being able to, um, s- serve until midnight, but other than that, that, um, that concludes our comments. Thank you.
And Commissioner Yeoman.
You know, I listen to this, I know that, you know, Matt Madelins and Texas Lills have cohabited, so to speak, for a long, long time. And, uh, and I agree, it's not our position to get in the middle of whatever differences they may have. But the, the real driving question for me was, is the health department, if there were health department issues, would that, would, did he be aware of those? I mean, um, I mean, if there's a, if there's a problem with the restaurant in town, would the city be aware of it and have to enforce those issues, the different, the problems?
If I can step in there, um, typically the health department would do their own enforcement. Um, there have been instances, though, where they have reached out to us because, uh, of various issues. And, uh, we have gotten involved and, um, but not typically, I mean, you might read about, uh, some, uh, restaurant who's been downgraded from an A to a B for various reasons. Maybe a refrigerator wasn't cooled properly or something, and they don't reach out to us for those kinds of things. Um, if there were building code type deficiencies and lack of floor drains and adequate, uh, dishwashing things where they needed to do tenant improvements, uh, the health department would most certainly reach out to us and get us involved in that, uh, but they have not done so. And as Mr. Rawlings has indicated, uh, they just had an inspection. These inspections are ongoing. They, I don't know if, uh, maybe Sid can respond to this, but how often the inspections actually occur. Um, but it, it is fairly regularly and he's been in business, uh, as we've been hearing for thirty years. And this has never come up as an issue, uh, as far as floor drains and et cetera.
What other question? The request for Saturday, Friday and Saturday go to, uh, midnight. Do you have a feel? I mean, I kind of do, but does the city have a feel? For how many other, like, well, just look at Texas Lills right next door. I mean, are they open to, are they serving liquor to midnight? Or all the other restaurants along, um, Front Street, are they streaming alcohol to midnight? You have a feel for that?
We have a, a variety of hours that various places close. But the most direct answer probably to your question is yes, there are various, uh, restaurants that are able to stay open until one or two o'clock.
And they're only asking for it on two days a week, right?
Asking for, uh, I heard Friday and Saturday until midnight.
Okay, thank you.
You through? Commissioner Terry Teal.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, when I originally looked at this, I was grateful that it, they were closing at ten because of, um, what has been going on in Old Town and with some concerns down there and just adding to that. So that's my concern of lengthening those hours. Um, and I know we can't, as far as the other issues, the health department issues, I don't think we can really speak on those. So it's been good to get feedback tonight on that. Uh, but as far as the liquor license itself, um, I would feel more comfortable if closing time was at ten.
Okay, and my comments are, are basically, I'm not concerned with the time, I'm not concerned with the, with the operation, as long as we have enforcement and we have a, a clear outlook at what's going on there. And that's always been the case when we have an application like this, in my mind. That's it. The enforcement arm is the one that keeps control. If it doesn't, then we have an issue that we have to solve. But I've been here for at least thirty years. And Texas Lills, Lills has been a little bit shorter than that, but, but Matt Madelins has been there forever. And things, things seem to go on. There's an error here and there with the health department. The city sometimes gets involved, can get involved, but it's still there and I, I, uh, I have no reason to shut it down or, or deny this.
John, I have another, so I have another question for Eric. If that's all right.
Yeah, you're on.
Eric, is the, uh, conditional use permit, I, I could be way wrong on this, but I thought the original or the, the proposal was to keep their hours till ten o'clock. And now I'm hearing Friday and Saturday still midnight. Is that part of the original proposal? Is that, um, an addition that the applicant is putting forward tonight for our consideration?
You're correct. The ten o'clock closing hour was what we were running with all along. And then tonight, as we all heard, they'd like to go to midnight, so we're all hearing it for the first time.
Thank you.
Is that it? Anyone else? Thank you, sir. We'll open it up for, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. I think we've had a lot of discussion. Anybody have any further thoughts? If not, a call for a motion.
Is the motion gonna? Do we have to include the longer hours in the motion?
I do have a question if I could, real quick, for Maricela. Um, because this project was noticed, um, assuming that, um, for, for certain hours, uh, actually, maybe it's a question for Eric. Eric, did the notice just simply go out to, uh, state that, um, you're adding the type forty-seven? Or did it include, include any additional information? And the part of the problem here, a concern I have too, is that the staff report, if anybody did happen to look it up, um, did not discuss this, so this wasn't really part of the notice, to change the hours at this point. So I don't know if it's appropriate, Maricela, to, uh, do this on the fly or if, um, it needs further consideration. Your thoughts?
Typically, I believe the notices just address the change in the type of license and don't generally also address the change in hours of operation. But I do hear what you're saying in terms of, um, concerns that that, you know, that might have brought additional public comments. Um, so what we could do, um, is continue the hearing, um, so that it can get renoticed to address the change in hours. Um, or the applicant can, you know, withdraw the request if they want to have it heard, uh, have it considered tonight. Um, I obviously don't know what the commission is thinking on this, whether or not you would even, um, want to allow additional hours, but, um, the, that would be the option I'd give to the applicant of, if they want to go longer, since that was not part of the initial application, part of the agenda packet. Um, that would be something that the public would know about. Yes, I think you have a question, Commissioner, uh, Watts?
Yeah, third option, is a third option, um, that if the proposal went through or whatever was approved as it is, would the applicant have a chance to come back and modify the hours if they wanted to go to midnight instead of ten for those two nights? Would that be an option?
Um, yes, I think, um, you would, you would be able to come back and do a modi-, uh, like a modification to their C U P. I think it's probably, Stuart, that'd be like a minor modification, correct?
It is, uh, another, uh, modification application. That's a new application, new set of fees and new notice would be required for that in a new hearing. But yeah, that would be an option to go that route as well. And I didn't bring this up as any kind of staff opposition to the proposed hours. Uh, but I am just anticipating that, um, we will receive complaints if we change midstream, um, in this particular case. We didn't have any public comments. I, I probably wouldn't think much of it, but in this case, um, I want to make sure we're kind of covering, uh, the appropriate things.
The hours issue, it was not in the, in the notice, right? Not in any kind of.
Not in the notice, but. It's not in the staff report.
It's in the staff report.
If anybody did look at, um, where it's available online, uh, what we're talking about now is not what they would have seen. They would have seen the, uh, ten, uh, P M time.
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to think, but I don't, that we have some kind of, of muscle to discuss and bring those things out at the commission hearings, especially when they've been noticed. But if it isn't something that the public was even aware of and able to be aware of, other than going to the, to the staffs, uh, that, that presents a dilemma. I would, I would like to think we could deal with it here, but we don't have a public notice which is telling people that we want to stay out till ten.
Till midnight, they currently operate.
Yeah.
But it is fair to say that the notice did not discuss the hours of operation.
That's right.
Uh, anyway, so.
No, it, it didn't because it wasn't changing. So I think it would only have addressed it if there was going to be some change, because there wasn't a change. There wasn't a, um, it wasn't addressed in the notice, because why would you?
It's a good point.
Well, we can, we can entertain two different things in my mind, that we, we vote on it as we see it now or we vote to continue and allow the, uh, the public notice to go through, et cetera.
We hear from the applicant as to their preference, as to, do you want to have this continued so you can renotice addressing the hours or do you want to go ahead and have a vote tonight?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I guess what the hours were written down was eight o'clock to ten P M, eight E M to ten P M, all the way down, Monday through Sundays. You know what? I'd rather go with what you said earlier, just stay with that hours, eight to ten. I'm happy with that. I'm okay with that. Uh, this is the new ballgame for me. And in there thirty years, I've seen, you know, the bars with twelve and one and two. So I really want to enter that, the area. I'm not sure yet, you know what I'm saying? So I'm more than willing to come back, talk to you guys or do the planning or paperwork and pay in the fees and let me get started, you know what I'm saying? And we come back to this later. Um, it's a new ballgame for me. Yes, we've done beer and wine, but, you know, the spirits, a different ballgame. But, you know, the spirit's a different ballgame, so hey, I'm happy with eight and Monday through Sunday. So that way, you get to get going and get the ball going and, you know, do another thirty years, I guess, and if I want to change hours, I'll come back to you guys.
So it sounds like the applicant is withdrawing their request to extend the hours, and so the commission, since there's no changes to the application, the commission is free to go ahead and entertain a motion.
Agree, I am.
Was that a motion to approve?
Yes.
And that includes the eight to ten hours, right? Okay.
Same, the same.
Stuart, do you have the vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Taliio.
I.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
I.
Commissioner Watts.
I.
And Commissioner Yeoman. So I have a motion from Commissioner Yeoman, a second from Commissioner Watts, and motion carries four zero.
And I'd just like to tell the applicant that just because my my personal feeling is, I thought it was ten. I didn't realize the twelve was until you brought it up, and I would have preferred to have mulled that over before. It's not a matter that I'm opposed to it at all. It's just the whole public notice and that type of thing, just so you'll know that, okay?
Turn and our word, but I said, let's just get the ten and get moving on. And if I want to change it, I'll come back and ask you guys to pay the fee or whatever needs to be, but, you know, I've seen too much in Old Town. It is it's a lot, and I'm glad we have the police force down there and what's happening down there. It's great to have them there. It's wonderful. It's great to see them and be visible. I'm happy with eight ten. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I hope to see you another thirty years, so, all right? Thank you again.
Okay, we're in the commissioner reports, and because we are in a virtual setting, I wish to ask my colleagues individually for their comments. Commissioner Watts?
I think I've talked out.
Yeoman.
I'm good. No, thank you.
Charlie Trejo.
I'm good also.
And I am also, so I will go to commission subcommittee reports. Do we have one? Anybody? Doesn't sound like it. And committee of the development director report.
And of course, Luke is not here tonight, and I do not have anything to report to you tonight.
And I thought I saw a public worker fellow on my break.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to address a couple of things because Amir did not have his microphone working. He did text me later and he let me know that the question regarding the grant is four hundred and one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. However, the grant monies do not cover professional services and administration for that project, so therefore, we're going to appropriate twenty thousand dollars for measure S in order to take care of that design engineering and administration, so he just wanted to pass that along since the question was asked. And then I wanted to address Lanay's question last week or our last meeting when she asked about the bathrooms over at the sports park that were being done. I know she was looking for a little more detail, so I did get that for her. There's going to be eight unisex bathrooms for handicap and enlarged concession area and a storage area for the maintenance crews from the city, and so that's all being done, and then some improvements to the parking lot. So once that facility is complete, which it should be done within another, you know, couple of months, then the existing building will be demoed. And so that, so there's some site work that needs to be done, some demo, and then that'll be complete, and then, so I hope that helps with a little.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the Wabash signal was bids were received yesterday. We're going to be taking that to council. And that's on Temecula Parkway where our parking ride is at, to have new access coming in across from Wabash and then eliminate the access that's on the Los Ranchitos side on Vallejo. So that signal is going to be put in, it's going to city council May twenty fifth, and it'll be awarded, and then by early June, that traffic signal will be under construction. So we wanted to pass those two items on to you.
And anyone else before?
Yeah, I just have a question for Ron. So Wabash, you're talking, that one's right off of Temecula Parkway in California Sunset.
Correct, yeah, going into California Sunset.
There'll be a light there also.
There are going to be some, yeah, the lights are going to be very close together.
Yeah.
And however, that is part of the development agreement that was with Los Ranchitos when the parking ride came in, is that we
I remember.
Signal in and then close off the entrance on Vallejo.
Hopefully somehow they'll be timed, because that's that's already so hard.
Well, since you asked, we do have a H S I P. project that we receive grant monies for, and it's for fiber optic and to be able to tie in all of our signals, so on our main corridors. So that project was approved by city council, and we are going out to bid probably within the next few weeks, and we'll purchase all the controllers and get all the information. Excuse me, the parts and everything, and then we're going to probably be constructing that well before the end of the year. And then that'll tie in the inner signals, you know, so that all the signals are able to be timed together, and there'll be more capability of us being able to play with those signals in our traffic's traffic center.
So when is that light supposed to be done?
The light will probably will be done before the end of the year, because they're starting in June. I would say it's probably at least a three month project to get that online. So by fall.
That's that's right, in line with the park and ride, so people from Park and Ride could go out that way, correct?
It's actually, yeah, and it'll, it's actually in the next parcel over, so the alignment will be, once you go through and you make that left onto Wabash, you're going to make kind of a big left hand turn and then head into the park and ride on that south side. Or east side, east side.
Okay, yeah, hopefully.
Configuration.
Yeah, that's going to be interesting. Okay.
Yeah, it is very close, but it's something we must do.
Yeah, summer.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Looking for a motion and a second to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor. You're doing it, Stuart, right?
Yeah, let's go ahead. Commissioner Taliio.
I.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
I.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yeoman. And I'm sorry, who's the motion from?
Me.
That's what I thought.
Gary.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Watts and a second from Commissioner Charlie Trejo in motion carries four oh.
Thank you.
Joining the regular meeting on May nineteenth at six o'clock, and according to this, in the city council chambers. We got to stop saying that. We're not going to go back there.
Oh, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Everyone.
Bye.